If we can reconvene our meeting to open session, the board has been in executive session since six o'clock to discuss a confidential personnel matter, a legal matter, and a student matter. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, equal civil liberties, and justice.
You have introductions.
David Hurst.
Catherine Natta.
Randy Sampson.
Meredith Mariarty.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dunnebach.
Christine Beck.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Willobea.
Judy Kehoe.
First up is our approval of minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the September 1st, 2021 regular board meeting. So, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Next up are our meeting reports. First up is our superintendent's report.
Thank you. I have a few things to report. I wanted to provide an update on transportation. So, I think everyone's aware of the shortage in drivers holding CDLs. Recently, Massachusetts actually called in the National Guard to help secure enough drivers, and there's been delays in bringing students to and from school in many districts. So, I am happy to report that based on the changes that we made to the routes for the beginning of the year, we were able to just cover the 59 routes. With ongoing COVID concerns, we have lost a few drivers, but we do have some new drivers in training, and with the recent changes by the governor, hopefully that will help expedite them to get on the roads quicker than it had been in the past. We do expect to at least hold steady with our drivers and hopefully gradually grow more drivers through recruitment and retention. So unless the number of drivers changes far more quickly than we expect, we will likely need to retain a three-tier routing structure that we have in place currently. We are still assessing the ridership. We said that we would look at that for the first 10 weeks of school, but with the number of drivers we have and with the number of students taking the bus, I'm not sure that we would be able to greatly consolidate our routing. So, the routes have been consolidated. We were able to reduce them from about 70 routes, as I said, down to 59, and we'll continue to assess these. We probably can make some minor consolidations, but we're not expecting that we will be able to make more significant changes at this point. We'll certainly keep the board and community posted in the coming weeks, and hopefully we'll be able to assess and keep transportation going with the least degree of disruption to students and families.
Jody, does that rule out changing the start time of the high school back?
If we have to stay at the three-tier system, we would have to keep the high school start time as it is now. Again, it's still early in the year, so I can't say I can, you know, we should totally rule that out, but I would say it's not looking promising. So I think moving ahead, we're going to need to look at potentially what are the start times for all, start and end times for all of our levels, because during the committee's work, we did not change any other buildings' schedules. We were trying to maintain that, but unless we start seeing more significant increases in drivers, I'm not, I think that's something we need to look at. We talked about last time, looking at the eligibility for riding. I did reach out to BOCES to ask them if there was any way, if there's, districts are in emergency situations, that we could change the eligibility without having to do a community vote, because right now, if you go to two miles for K through eight and three miles for high school, you don't have to do a community vote, but anything in between, you do. So in these times, perhaps it makes sense, we don't need to go to two and three miles, but what if we needed to go to a half mile for elementary or a mile and a half for high school? We're still offering the service for the majority of the community, but it might allow some flexibility, and that is when BOCES had contacted State Ed, that's a State Ed regulation, so they are looking into it. I have a meeting tomorrow at BOCES, so hopefully there's supposed to be an update on that, if that would be an option. So that might be helpful, not just to us, but to other school districts to consider if needed.
I'm wondering if it would make sense to reach out through to MSBA to see if they could do some advocacy with respect to that issue with State Ed?
Sure, we can do that.
Do we know with respect to the walking distance, what we would need in order to be able to go back to the later start time?
Right. So that's something that we're looking at. We're looking at what's the impact if, for example, we went to a half-mile eligibility for elementary. Elementary is our largest ridership, so that's where we have the most routes, the most number of students. So what impact does that have? Also looking at for high school, what's the change if we looked at an eligibility of one and a half miles or two miles? What does that do for us in regards to capacity and flexibility for times? So I think those are things we're looking at, and we should be able to provide updates as we, you know, we really are just getting accurate ridership data currently, because there's been a lot of changes, but those are things that we can look at and see what's the impact, what's the benefit, in addition to looking at potentially what's the start and end times for all of our levels.
Do we need to reconvene the Start School Leader Committee that was in place looking at these issues previously?
I'm not sure we need to reconvene the committee, because if we're looking at the start and end times, we do have some information that we had from the original reports where the consultant we had at the time, Brooks, had provided us different options, so I think we might start there. And then if we needed to bring some of those committee reps together, we could look at that, but I want to pull that out again rather than recreating those options, but there were several proposals that we looked at. I think there were nine or 10 different options.
Jody, some of those options, when we were discussing them in that committee, we had, I think, three at the end that were possibilities that looked like that they would all work, and the question was which one would be best under what we could do. So maybe going back to those three would be the first step to see what we could do as far as getting back to a different, early later start time.
Right. And generally, the committee was, I think, although we ultimately went with the one where we didn't change any, and we kept middle and high school on the same start and end time, I think the committee was generally in favor of all three of those options. So that would be a good starting point, and then we can look at how does that work with our current drivers and routing system?
Okay.
That's me, that's me recollection as well, that there were three that were all acceptable.
Yep.
Could we also perhaps just spread the word again, that if parents voluntarily take their children off of the bus routes, that that could greatly help the situation and perhaps the, you know, change the high school's start time? If they're unhappy with this high school's start time as it is now, you know, look at whether or not they can take their children off of transportation?
Sure, we can send out another reminder. Ultimately, at this point, we're pretty much collecting who's actually getting on and off the buses, but it's always helpful if parents can provide that definitive information. I'd like to congratulate some of our high school students. We had 33 seniors who were among a select group of students from the Capital District that were honored by the University of Albany for the 2021 Multicultural High School Achievers. The awards honors high school students who have achieved academic excellence and have been involved in extracurricular and community activities throughout their high school careers, and all of the names of those individuals are on our website. I also wanted to provide an update on our staff vaccinations. So at the last board meeting, the board passed a resolution requiring staff to be fully vaccinated unless they had a medical or religious exemption. We did work with our units on this, and at this point, we currently have 99% of our staff who are either fully or partially vaccinated, and will all be fully vaccinated by October 13th. We also are continuing to ask parents to notify us of students who are fully vaccinated. We have had a good response. We're planning to continue to acquire student vaccinations for high-risk activities similar to what we did in the fall, and we did just send something out, the principals sent something out regarding the clubs that meet this criteria, and we'll be notifying student athletes, those who wish to participate in high-risk sports for the winter, that they would need to be fully vaccinated by the start of winter sports, which I believe for varsity and JV are November 15th, so they have plenty of time to get those two-dose vaccinations prior to the start, which student athletes this summer for the fall season, we did give a grace period of two weeks, but we won't need to do that for winter sports.
Jody, could you clarify what the rule is for student athletes who want to do high-risk activities that are not yet eligible for the vaccine?
Sure. So there's not too many, because sports are seven through 12, so most seventh graders, especially by winter, will be eligible, but if a student's not eligible to be vaccinated, then they're required to participate in weekly testing, which our nurses will be doing once those seasons begin. And the same would be true for some of the high-risk activities as well for middle, yeah, who are not eligible, they would be required to participate in weekly testing.
Tax bills. I'm going to ask Judy to comment on some concerns that have been brought to our attention regarding tax bills?
Yes, our phones have been steadily busy all day long with taxpayers who mail their payments early and still have not had their checks cleared at the bank. We reached out to BOCES, who processes the bulk of those payments for us, and they are struggling with some staffing issues at the moment. I talked to the director of the service within the last two days, and they indicated that they are redeploying staffing resources, they're trying to supplement their existing staff so that they can get caught up, but there will not be penalties, of course, to any taxpayers whose payments they have, but it's a peace of mind factor at this point, because people look for those canceled checks as their proof of payment. So we've urged them to please get that staffing rolling so that we can be caught up. The concern is, is that we're coming up to the end of the non-penalty period, and people want to know that their taxes have been paid in time. So we did push out a communication where we asked people who haven't submitted their payment yet, one, we alerted them to the delays that are happening through this service, and then we suggested if they want that full peace of mind, they do have the options to go to the two pioneer banks within town, one in Glenmont and one here in Delmar, where they can pay in person and get an immediate receipt for that payment, and there are also options to pay by e-check or through a credit card payment off of the district's website as well. There are some fees associated with that, so it's not used as heavily as it could be, but those are the options to make sure that the payments are made and posted for their peace of mind.
I have a question, Judy, because I happen to be one of those people who mailed their taxes in the first week of September.
Yes.
And, you know, what I'm worried about is with this backlog with BOCES, what if, for some reason, it gets misplaced or it's lost, and I'm not going to be notified until after the due date? I don't want to be assessed a penalty, because I know I mailed it, but I don't have proof I mailed it.
Right. So we are sensitive to that, and we were just in communication with BOCES as well of, look, you have to, you have a duty to notify people, one, if there's an error, or two, if it wasn't received. So we're trying to use the 24th as the cutoff date on that, and we've put a two-week grace period on that so that taxpayers have the ability to get it corrected without incurring the penalty. So I will be following up with them to gauge how caught up they are, and they understand the impacts that we're experiencing locally. It's not the first time we've had delays with the service either, so I have shared our concerns and urge them to remedy it.
Okay. Judy, are people who pay through S-Gro, is that effective?
S-Gro payments tend to come in electronically and in computerized batches, so typically, no. It's only those who are paying directly.
Yes, okay.
And the last is a little bit of a good news. The district was rated number one in the Capital Region by Niche.com. That's one of the ratings that come out annually. They were released this week, and the district's ranking is based on analysis of academic and student life data from the U.S. Department of Education, along with test scores, college data, and ratings collected from users. So what was interesting this year is we were the number one district in the Albany area, number 30 in New York State, 158 in the U.S. out of 10,72 districts, but our staff, our teachers, were ranked number 52 in the U.S. for best teachers in America, so I thought that was, that was pretty cool. So I'd like to thank all of our staff, students, and our community for their continued support of the district. That's my report.
Anybody have any other questions for Jody?
Moving on to the board report, I just wanted to say a quick thank you to all of our staff for a great, great opening and great first few weeks of school. It's, for me personally, it's been especially fun to see a lot of the after-school clubs and activities and sports at the middle school and the high school, kind of picking up some steam and seeing kids getting back involved, and, because I think they really, really missed that last year. I know everybody probably got emails about it, but just in case you missed it, MSBA has switched to a virtual convention this year. We're doing a one-day virtual convention on October 25th, which is free of charge, and if you are interested, there, I'm sure, are plenty of emails about it in your inbox. They are also doing a virtual business meeting to vote on all of the resolutions that usually get put forward, so we do need to provide a delegate for that. It looks like it's going to be held on Monday, October 18th at four o'clock. If anybody is interested in serving as the delegate, please reach out to me, and I know. And that's all I have. Anybody have anything else they would like to share?
I'll just add to your thanks to the staff, to the teachers, to the bus drivers, to everybody up, down, and sideways in the school community. It's been a really great back-to-school. You know, we continue to face crazy challenges and continue to just troubleshoot and work a way through them, and it's just really, really awesome. So as both a parent and a board member, thank you to everybody who's making that not just possible, but great.
Next on our agenda is our presentation this evening, and it is a special education presentation, a review of the summer program.
Can you hear me? Okay, okay. All right, so, good evening, everybody, and good evening to the Board of Education and the B.C. community. With me tonight for this presentation is Sarah Flannery, who's the Assistant Director of Special Education, but almost more importantly tonight, she's the ESY Coordinator. So Sarah ran summer program this year for the first time, did a great job, but is going to have a lot of information for us as well about the program. So tonight, we wanted to share with you information about the ESY program from 2021. We had offered to do this in the spring. If you recall, March 30th, at one of our Board of Education meetings, there were a lot of questions from parents about the program that we had recommended for this past summer, which was again a three-hour program. At that time, in that evening, we listened to parents' questions and concerns. What we told them we would do is at the end of ESY, we would do a survey, and we would gather some information. So tonight, one of the purposes of this is for us to share out some information about the program. So we're going to run through, it's a little hard to see this. So what we want to, whoops, let me go back, but thanks. So our purpose tonight is really to share out as much information as we can for you, but numbers about the program, what the planning process was, we had talked about that the night of the 30th, and how much goes into the planning, a look at the typical day that we experienced this summer, and then feedback from parents and from our staff. Okay, but, thank you. So, so a survey was sent out about the ESY program, and we received 135 responses back. Well, excuse me, I, there were 135 students recommended for ESY, I apologize for that. When we did the survey, ah, no, we had 100, I gotta start over again. There were 135 students recommended for ESY through the annual review process. Of that 135, 105 attended the program, so that's how many kids were in the program. As far as our staffing is concerned, we had 13 special education teachers participate in the program, 24 aides to students with disabilities, we had nine service providers, and then we had two nurses that worked the program for us. So one of the things that we had talked to you about earlier were some of the challenges about getting staff, so we wanted to share with you, of the staff that we had with us, how many were B.C. staff and how many were outside of the district? So of our B.C. special education staff, we had four special educators from B.C., and then we had two other staff members from the district that were duly certified that worked for us. So six B.C. teachers, and then seven were from outside the district. For the aides to students with disabilities, we needed 24, and we had 23 from the district. We've always been really pretty fortunate that our aides have wanted to work with us for the summer. For related services, we had three B.C. members, and then we had to hire six members, so speech OTPT from outside the district, and then one of our nurses was able to work for us this summer, and then we hired one nurse from outside the district. So Sarah's going to jump in and do the next section.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. So as Kathy mentioned, the planning for ESY really begins way back in January, when we start with our projections and then our annual review meetings, and that's where we start to compile our lists of who we think will be recommended for ESY programming, and then through the meeting process, we start confirming who will in fact be attending our ESY program. In March and April, we're really focused on staffing the program, posting the positions that we anticipate needing, and hiring for those positions. We also spend some time working on schedules and preparing communication for families. Then when we get into May and June, it's a lot more of the logistics, including making sure all of our staff have emails, keys, technology, as well as coordinating with our assistive tech coordinator, who makes sure everything is ready for the students when they start on day one. Moving into July, which isn't really shown on here, it's when our teachers come in right before the program starts, they get their classrooms set up, and meet with their aides, review IEPs, start their lesson planning for the school year, for the summer. So in our Bethlehem ESY program, we have three main categories of recommended programs and services. One is special class programming, that's primary, intermediate, and secondary skills classes, or RISE, which is our high school students. Those classes all ran last summer for three hours with the same ratios as during the regular school year. Our second main category of recommended program is specialized instruction, that runs for three hours, three days a week, if students are recommended for both ELA and math. Each of those individually is 45 minutes. We do have a handful of students who might be recommended for just one or the other. Students in the specialized instruction program may be students who during the school year received direct consultant teacher services, or maybe in a co-taught classroom. And finally, we have related services. We have, just again, a handful of students, all elementary, who may be recommended for just related services, but also we have students in those other two programs that may also be receiving related services as part of their ESY recommendations. So I wanted to show you a little bit about what a typical day looks like. You can see on the left, there is a schedule that was posted up in the front of the room. That one is from our Skills 2-3 class, which had eight students enrolled in it this summer. What I specifically liked about that picture, it might be a little hard to see, but within the sections of the day, the teacher further differentiated in the time block for ELA and had very small groups, again, so the students are receiving very specific targeted instruction. The schedule on the right is from our third-grade specialized instruction class, there were nine students in there. What I liked about this particular example is that you can see that there were times throughout the day for the academics, of course, but there's also time built in for breaks and flexibility for students who might need a break. Of course, I wanted to show you what we got to see in these classes. The bottom right and the top right are both from that specialized instruction grade-three class. The student in the middle is working on some writing, almost certainly about dinosaurs, I can pretty much guarantee you, and the two pictures all the way on the left show how some STEM activities are built into the reading and math that we do in ESY. So now moving on to a typical day at the secondary level. Over on the left, you'll see two schedules in a special class setting. The top one is our middle school intensive skills class. Again, it's a little bit hard to see, but they had reading, math, social studies, ELA, there was a dog visit built in, and still time for snacks, so they fit a lot into that schedule. Down on the bottom was one of our high school RISE classes. They had time built in there for academics, they had some social time, as well as some time for some practical life skills. Over on the right was our middle school specialized instruction class, again, time for ELA and math, as well as some choice time, and some social opportunities as well. As with the elementary, I wanted to show you some pictures from the secondary program. Of course, we had our therapy dog visits, which were a huge hit this summer. Those are a couple of our high school students. Down in the bottom is our RISE class. Up top left is another one of our RISE classes, and then we have some of our middle school intensive skills. intensive skills classes as well. So again, you can see that, I thought it would be nice for you to be able to see what our students were doing in our E.S.Y. program. So as we move into some of the specifics that we got from parents, as well as some attendance data, I wanted to just share that E.S.Y. is governed by state and federal regulations. The federal I.D.A. tells us that it is our responsibility to provide E.S.Y. services as part of a free and appropriate public education for our students. We make those recommendations individually, not by program, not by disability, based on what students need. New York State Ed. Part 200 tells us that E.S.Y. is recommended for students to prevent substantial regression. If you're sitting in a CSE where E.S.Y. services are being recommended, you would definitely hear conversations about maintaining skills and preventing regression, and the committee would be looking at data that's collected by the teacher that shows that a student requires additional months, additional weeks of programming to maintain those skills.
So one of the other things we wanted to share out with people is, for the students that attended E.S.Y., what did attendance look like? So in our special classes, as Sarah laid out for you, so the Skills, intensive skills RISE program, 83, we had 83% attendance rate for our two high school classes. We had 94% attendance rate for the two middle school classes, and then 85% attendance rate for our elementary programs. For the specialized instruction, the E.L.A. and math, we had 74% attendance rate for the middle school program, and 76% attendance for the elementary programs. And then for related services, and as Sarah said, sometimes those were part of the other programs, but a big component of that is parents would often sign up for a time slot, and they would bring their students in. And even with parents, you know, transporting, we had 83% of all sessions were attended, and those were primary, those were really at the elementary level. So the attendance rate was really pretty good. So we thought we would also show you what some of this looked like in some pie chart forms. So these are our survey results. And again, when we sent out the survey, of those 105 students that attended, we heard from 35 respondents. So this is information from that grouping. The first question that we asked were, were the E.S.Y. services offered individualized to your child's needs? And we had an 85.7 response rate of yes. Yes, they were, you know, the services were specialized and individualized to the child. The second question we asked is, did you feel you received regular communication from your child's E.S.Y. providers? 80% said yes, they did. 2.9 said that did not answer, and then 17% said no. The next questions we asked was, did you receive your child's progress monitoring? And again, that's the data that we provide to parents. We set up goals on the IEP, and then we work on that goal, and then we show parents the progress that their students have made. 82.9% of our families said yes, they did receive the progress monitoring on their students. And then the final question over here on the right is, we asked, did your child show regression in any of the IEP areas? And again, that's a hallmark on why we're looking at E.S.Y. programming. And the 80% of the respondents said no, there was no regression. So their students came, they participated in the program, and they felt like their students were showing no regression at all.
So in the survey, we also gave parents an opportunity to offer comments. So this was just a sampling of those. But one parent said their child loved their E.S.Y. teacher. We had a parent say they preferred their longer day, three hours is too short. Child enjoyed the lessons and activities. One person said, so thankful for the program, please keep it, please don't take it out of the budget. One said there wasn't enough communication from the teachers, specials should be included, three hours allowed time for other activities, and one family simply said, thank you. So as Kathy mentioned, we did have 30 families who declined E.S.Y. services, even though it was offered in their annual review CSE and put on their child's IEP. So we wanted to know why. Some of the reasons were that families wanted their child to participate in camp. They chose to pay for tutoring instead. Some families opted for vacation opportunities. Some families felt that downtime was more important. We heard there were some COVID concerns about attending E.S.Y., and one person said that programming is not engaging enough. So here's what our staff had to say. I asked staff at the end of the summer, knowing that this was upcoming, to share some of their thoughts. The first is from a Bethlehem employee who works every single year as part of E.S.Y. The second was from another Bethlehem employee who works every single year, and the third was from one of the out-of-district employees that we hired. You know, looking at them, I saw, you know, similarities. All staff do return year after year, but there was consistency in, you know, some of their comments about being able to provide creative ways to maintain learning. They talked about collaboration. They talked about success. They talked about engagement, and they talked about connections. I thought it was kind of neat that one person said it was like a family. Another out-of-district teacher said that it's like coming home every summer. Being part of E.S.Y. is really a very collaborative program, and it was pretty, pretty cool to be part of. So finally, on the second to last day of E.S.Y., we arranged to have the Kona ice truck come for a bit of a celebration for all of the hard work of the students and staff. Everybody had Kona, and it was, it was, it was a good option because it was allergy sensitive. Our SES clerical team came over and helped out with serving the students, and they really enjoyed that. I've heard from a few people that they'd like to kind of grow up this day and be something a little bit bigger than just the Kona ice truck, maybe like some games that the older students can plan and organize and run for some of the younger students. So I see potential here to make this even kind of more of a celebration, maybe a new E.S.Y. tradition, looking ahead to the future. I definitely, as I kind of alluded to, you know, and Kathy's heard me say this, my colleagues have heard me say this, you know, being able to coordinate E.S.Y. as part of my role here in Bethlehem has been one of the really highlights of my time here. And it's because of these faces, it's because of the staff. Certainly, I would invite any of you to come in next summer and see the programming that we do. The students are engaged, the teachers are happy to be there, and it's truly a place where we're meeting students' needs. And that's the end. Anybody have any questions?
I do have one question. That is, going back to the attendance rates, the percentages, do you have anything to compare, do you have any comparison to prior years or last year to ever feel as to how it compares?
Jonathan, we did not look at that. I don't know if I've kept the data. I certainly can look to see.
It might be something to keep for future and to start looking at it to see if there are areas that can be improved on based on the number of people that come, why they're coming, why they're not coming, that kind of thing.
I can, I can say that the overall number, the 125, that number of students that are recommended or generally come is pretty consistent, like that percentage of students is pretty consistent. We haven't had higher, you know, significantly higher or lower fluctuations, but I don't know specifically, you know, that 135 to 105, if we can keep data on that in the future.
Thank you.
Do you, do you have an anecdotal sense of whether the attendance is, I'm having trouble articulating. I wonder if the 15% non-attendance happens in one week chunks when families go on vacation?
That's a big part of it was vacations, absolutely. That was probably the bulk of it.
And then as you, building off of this year, as I understand it, it was, it was quite a change to go to the three-hour program. As you start looking toward 2022, how will you be thinking about evaluating whether to stick with a three-hour program or to return to a longer day program?
So Kathleen, I know you're a little bit newer to the board. So just for a little bit of history, we also ran a three-hour program the year before, which, which came after the three-month closure of COVID and about a three-week period of time where we got the program ready. That was the first year that we truly recognized that in that three-hour period of time, we were, we were getting to all of the students' goals. We were, you know, absolutely doing what, what the IEP was asking for, while still making sure that the students were, were having some fun, and enjoyment, and socialization, and all those other pieces. So we looked at it more closely this year. We had, as I think you all know, we had a number of families, a handful of families that really did want a longer program. And that will always be an option. It might not be an option. You know, what we offered last year was, that option still exists through the CSE process by not attending a program in Bethlehem, but it could still be an option. So what we, what we've talked about, at one point, we had talked about doing another survey, but we're thinking that, you know, we've already done a survey. So we have, we're very fortunate to have a pretty robust parent group, the parent advisory committee. So we will, in the fall, be bringing information back to that group and getting feedback there to help us with our planning for next summer.
And if I could add, yeah, one other, well, maybe two other points. So I did take some time and look at just a random sampling of, of progress reports for students from the summer, two, two from each class. It was totally random. The majority of students did achieve their E.S.Y. goals. So that's specific data that we can use to say that we were able to accomplish maintaining skills and preventing regression with our three hours. You know, and we're always, whether it's our E.S.Y. or our school year programming, I mean, we as a SES leadership team, we've got two of our CSE chairs here tonight, too. We're always looking at our programs. We're always looking at our student needs and making sure everything is lined up. Thank you.
So I have a, oh, go ahead, Mary. I have a few questions. With the 30 students that you asked why they didn't attend, and the response was camp opportunity, did we ask a specific targeted question, was, was it because the hours were too short? Is that why the camp opportunities looked more attractive, because it was a longer program and they were working parents?
I would have, that would be a complete leap. That was not, I mean, I wouldn't be able to say that with definitiveness. I think anecdotally, I can think of one situation where that would apply.
And then on some of the responses, it did say we would like the longer program. Do we know how many of the 35 that responded said they'd like the, the longer program?
It was a handful, yeah, of the 35, of the 105.
Right, okay. There's also, just to your camp point, I recall from two or three summers ago, there's only one camp program that a K-5 child can be transported to. If they do the three-hour, five-hour program, there's only one option, I think, in the capital district. If, if a parent can't come and pick them up for the second half of the day, there's only one place they can be bused to. Is that still correct? I think that's one of those camp.
I think we changed that, though, Willow, when that came up. Was it the Y?
Yeah, that was the only one at the time.
And then I thought there was another one that met criteria, so we said we would transport to that one. There's certain criteria they have to qualify in order for us to transport. But I thought there was one other one that, but it's limited, yeah.
Over the course of time, Willow, some families have talked about very specific camps, you know, that they were weighing out the need for an academic program versus something very specialized that's, you know, only offered in the summer.
I still think, I mean, unless we're still not considering a longer program for next summer, I think it would still be beneficial to see out of those 135, if it was offered for a five, would that be more attractive? Just to kind of get a gauge on it, because I'm not sure how the questions were, were presented. But, well, just, I'm sorry, out of the 135, not all would have been eligible for the five-hour program, right?
Correct, correct. Yeah, but, thank you. That's a very valid point, because the, you know, in three years ago, if you go back to our original program, and we, we had a five-and-a-half-hour program, five days a week for very specific students. It was, that was a small number of students who attended that program. And then there was a three-hour program. So while Sarah showed you the four, the three options, three years ago, there were four options. So, but it was a smaller group of students.
So if that were the case now, out of 135, how many would qualify normally on a given year for like the five-and-a-half-hour, five-hour program?
It's different every year because it's an individualized decision. So, you know, we would have to look at our overall population and see, I mean, maybe between 30 and 40.
Okay, so pretty decent number out of the 135.
But again, yeah, no, I just wanted to just add that, you know, I want to just mention that for every family that said they wanted a longer program, there were families that also shared that they were happier with the shorter program. So it's really about what does the student need to maintain their skills. Is that so?
Because some of those, those folks that, that Sarah mentioned, that number of 35 or 40, were very happy and gave us very positive feedback that were, that they were in just a three-hour program. So it's, yeah.
With the specialized instruction, it stuck out that the attendance rate was, you know, at least a 10% lower than the first, what was it, the first area?
Skills.
So skills, yeah, that's right. So have we, do we have a good gauge on why that is? And because some parents put it could be more engaging, are we going to follow up maybe to get more data on why the attendance rate was so much lower than the skills? Because if I were just looking at it just as a layperson, I'm thinking, oh, well, I got to do math for 35. So I got to do, that's a good data skip. So is there a correlation to that?
Well, I think it's, it's really similar to Willow's question. And it really, you know, when you're talking about a three-day program, I think it was almost easier for families to make a decision to go on vacation. Again, I can't speak for families, but if you were to look at our attendance chart, it was, it was, as Willow mentioned, weeks off, not just like a day here and there.
Also, but. Wouldn't you say that on the skill side, too, or no?
Well, there's more kids that are in the skills, so the percentage might be a little skewed, too, because there's less kids that just get the specialized instruction. So if you have three or four kids who miss, that's going to alter your percentages a lot more than the skills numbers, because it's just a larger number of kids that attend. So that's probably part of it. The percentages don't always, you know, with smaller numbers, obviously, they get skewed more easily.
And how would the, the OT or the PT, did that play into the schedule? So if I were in a skills class, like that schedule looked really compressed. What are they missing when they're doing OT, PT, speech?
Well, it would depend on where in the schedule they're going. But again, you know, teachers do a really nice job of collaborating so that the skills are carried over from area to area to area. So it's not so much about missing. Maybe on that day, they don't do the activity that is not directly aligned to their goal. Maybe they don't do the walk at the end of the day in order to make up the work that was missed while they were at therapy. It's more about the entirety of the program than each individual piece, because they all fit together so well.
So OT or PT pushing in at all?
Sometimes.
Sometimes, yeah. Would they ever miss like recess or social activities because of the services, because the schedule? Because the schedule is condensed in the three hours, there isn't as much flexibility?
Sometimes.
They miss it, okay.
Sometimes, yeah, because the priority has to be addressing the goals. So yeah, that, that could potentially happen. But, you know, quite often the P T would go be seen out on the playground, working on the skills out on the playground.
And do we have like anything that has, like the responses, like where like two people said this or three people? You know, how sometimes we send out surveys and then we compile the numbers just to see the data points. It was nice that we got to see, you know, some of the comments, but do we actually have like a breakdown of like this many parents said this or this many parents said that out of the 35 with the questions that were asked? Like how many responded to each question?
We didn't compile it that way just because the answers were also very different. I mean, they were, you know, there's only 35.
They were open-ended.
And some didn't even do the narrative question at the end either.
Were they all open-ended or were there some like yes or no?
There were yes or no. That's where the charts came from.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you for putting this presentation together. It was nice to see what the kids were doing this summer and I haven't seen this program in a, in a while presented, so thank you.
And just one, one other question, kind of following up on Christine's. You had mentioned, perhaps I misunderstood, I thought I heard you mention that related services were geared toward elementary students. Is it, was that exclusively or I was just, again, maybe I misunderstood.
When it was a related service only, so you were getting articulation twice a week, that was the only service you were getting.
I see.
That group was, was elementary students.
I see. Because that's just how it sounded because that's the guideline.
Very typical in developmentally, or many more of our students get related services at the elementary level and it fades as they get older.
Thank you.
You know, we have very few high school students get it that are just getting a related service.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you for putting this program together every year. I can see obviously it's a lot of work and it's obviously really worthwhile for our students who are there. And I appreciate actually the invitation to see it next summer. Obviously, we haven't been able to do that in a really long time and I really hope that we can do this because I would love to see it in action. And I know you mentioned talking with the community of parents this fall. And I think that would be really useful in planning for next summer just because we only, only getting 35 answers back on the survey. Feels like that's not quite enough information. So hopefully we can get some more information from the parents this fall about planning for next year because I think the question, you know, should we offer the longer day or not offer the longer day, is an important one and obviously we've had kind of like emergency summer and then we had, this past summer wasn't so much an emergency, but it was after a really, really challenging year. So hopefully next summer, fingers crossed, things are going well this year. It's less of a crisis situation and hopefully we can get back to figuring out exactly how we do want to move forward. Because as you said, there may be some really good points about the three-hour, only offering the three-hour day. But I feel like we don't quite have enough information on that because we didn't get, you know, we didn't get information from all the participants and the participants who didn't, who chose not to come. So if we could get some, some more data about that over this fall, I would appreciate it.
Kathy, can I ask one follow-up? It might not even be for you, but I'm wondering how our summer salary or stipend or hourly rate or however we pay the special educators compare to other E S Y districts? I'm wondering if there's a way to recruit more of our B C staff?
More, more B C staff? Yeah, we did bump up the rate and feedback from our staff, Willow, had nothing to do with rate of pay. People, you know, last year was a hard year for people.
Yeah.
And there were people who had worked in the past that just said, you know what, I, I need, I need some downtime. And I, I, I think that's an important thing to remember. I would say, and Sarah was at the program every day, but, you know, a lot of the staff that we recruited were wonderful, don't get me wrong, but they were, you know, folks, we had a couple of folks that were, this was their first job, you know, so a bit more eager. I mean, in, in previous years, we certainly had more of our staff, but I, I, I do not believe it had anything to do with rate of pay.
But we can collect that from what other schools who have.
But we had done that, but just so you know, when we looked at increasing the rate. So we are pretty consistent with other programs.
There's a lot of districts who only do the Bo C summer program too. They don't offer their own program. So with the ones that do, we keep an eye on that.
I mean, just speaking from personal experience, it takes one bad experience at E S Y with one not great teacher to not ever enroll your child in E S Y again. So I don't, I don't know. I don't really have anything else to say. Just if there, if there's a way that we can help support, make sure that the program is successful and that we're able to recruit good people for it, then I would want to hear how we can help, I guess was my point. Well, and also, it was a rough year last year. The fact that we were able to offer it and have the turnout that we did is very commendable. I mean, who, what teacher really wanted to come in unless they were new after like last year and the way they had to teach? And, and so the fact that we were able to put that together is, is great. So I'm appreciative of that. I, I just hope like Willow and Erica said, that we can collect either from the parents at the parent group or do follow-up survey questions to really drill down and maybe ask how we can make it more engaging. If, if that was one of the comments, like what can we do? Not that we're going to do everything that's suggested, but maybe, you know, get some ideas as to maybe what their student thought or what would make their day better, because maybe it's something we just don't see because we're in it all the time. So just, that's all I would say and thank you.
I certainly felt like I saw a lot of joy when I was there. It was, it was fun. I mean, if you, if you were here, you know, you could either go see the high school program, go across the street to Eagle, but there was a lot of really fun, enthusiastic kids and staff.
To be clear, I didn't mean to take away from any of that because I had one negative experience. I also, in the year that I was there, saw the, the family feeling that you were talking about and the collaborative, everybody meeting each other outside every morning. It was very heartwarming. I saw a lot of kids super excited to get off the bus. I, I did not mean to detract from the success.
No, no, I'm just, I was just saying that it was, it was fun to go through the program. And even midway through, you know, one of our supervisors came in and he was like, hey, let's get the kids out in the garden and we're going to start, you know, doing gardening and we, we, you know, I, I mean, other people, regular ed folks that were here participated in it. I, I thought it was a pretty exceptional summer, so. And you know, I, I, it would have been nicer if we had, you know, 105 respondents, but.
That's actually a good survey turnout. 30% is like a customary turnout. You don't usually, unless you're making them do it in class, nobody wants to do them.
Yeah, I feel, I feel really confident that we're putting together a really good program for our Bethlehem students who need that extra learning time in the summer. It's a really special, engaging place. Any other questions?
Sorry, we didn't look at this side of the.
Thank you. Thanks so much. All right, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is our public hearing on our district-wide safety plan for 2021, 2022. We are holding a public hearing on our proposed revised district safety plan as required by the education law. Residents of the district could submit comments either for or against on the proposed plan ahead of time using district email and comments received would be entered into the record. Or anyone who is present and would like to make a comment now, please come up to the microphone. And again, this is on the district-wide safety plan. Seeing no comments, I will close the public hearing and move on to our recognition of visitors on an agenda item. At this time, if we have any visitors who would like to address the board on an agenda item, please come up to the microphone.
Hi, I'm Dave Norman, district music supervisor. Coming up on the agenda is action on a budget amendment reflecting a donation from the Bethlehem Music Association for the purchase of a piano for Hama Grail Elementary. B M A President Jean Leonard is here this evening and it gives me the opportunity on behalf of the music department to thank her and the Bethlehem Music Association for this generous donation. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Next on the agenda, item six, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one and two.
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? And I'll just, I'll echo the thanks to the B M A for the donation. I love to see the new pianos going into our schools. It's fabulous. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. All right, next, B, professional personnel action items. And with an administrative note that under item two, Laurel Jones's name should be removed from the list.
Boo.
It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through 18.
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. C, support.
Yep. We just, hold on a minute. I just want to acknowledge that we knew Laurel Jones's name didn't say why and I think a thank you to her for all the time she spent in this district, for all the different positions that she held and for all the good she did for our students is appropriate. And I personally want to say thank you to her and on behalf of all the students that she had and the lives that she changed. I think it's a loss, but congratulations to her for this new opportunity.
Thank you, Jonathan, for those words. Definitely deserved.
Yeah, she was amazing. And it's an item at 18, so it does kind of say. We welcome, we wish her well in her new endeavor.
Yeah, definitely.
It's well, well deserved.
I see support personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through 25.
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. D, other action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through three.
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Number seven on the agenda, recognition of public comment on a non-agenda item. At this point, if we have any visitors with us who would like to address the board on a, on a non-agenda item, please come up to the microphone. Item eight, future meetings and events. Are, on Monday, September 27th at 5:30 PM, there's an audit committee meeting here at the high school. And then by Zoom at 7 o'clock is the 2021 Capital Project Forum. Wednesday, September 29th at 6 o'clock, a reminder that we're having our board retreat here at the high school. And on Wednesday, October 6th at 4 PM by Zoom is the, the district equity and inclusivity committee is meeting. And then we have our next regular board meeting that evening, anticipating executive session at 6 and the rest of the meeting at, starting at 7 o'clock. Seeing no need to go back into executive session, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you. Good night, everybody.